I forgot to say, good evening, welcome to this December 16th meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of December 9th?
I'll motion second.
All right, Ms. Flores.
Mrs. Marklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Gales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
I'll abstain.
President Alfer?
Abstaining from the HIV portion, yes, I'm the remainder.
Okay.
Our student liaisons are not with us yet, so we will postpone them and send it over to Dr. Cascone.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We have an exciting night planned for you tonight. Very happy to be doing our biannual parade of honors ceremony at which we recognize students, schools, community members for various accomplishments. It's also an auspicious evening tonight as well, as we send off two longstanding board members in Mr. Robertson and Mrs. Mordecai. So at this time, I would ask the board to take to the stage. You can be seated on the left-hand side, and anyone coming up to the stage should proceed up by this side of the stage. I would like at this time, anyone who's been asked to present award, an award, to also join us onstage, to be seated to the right of the stage in those chairs over there. So anyone that nominated and is here to present, please join us up on the stage. Thank you. Okay, so we are, thank you, everyone. We're going to commence our program, and I'd like to invite up to the microphone to do the first two awards. A man who probably doesn't need any introduction, but he's going to get one anyway, and that's our athletic director and number-one mountaineer fan, Mr. Bly. Mr. Bly, why don't you come on up and present your awards?
I'm not sure who's first on this program. I got him. Got it, yeah. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight our girls tennis team. They play in the toughest conference in the state of New Jersey. During the season, they play five out of the top 10 schools in the state of New Jersey. This year, we were in the Liberty Division. We were fortunate to have a great year, and we have a coach that's revitalized our tennis program. This is his third championship. I'd like to call up Mr. Jeff Masrick.
Thank you, guys, very much. First, I'd just like to thank the board, Superintendent Cascone, Mr. Bly, for all the support this season and through the years. It's been an outstanding time working with the tennis team and the girls tennis team specifically. This season, we finished with a 10-and-10 record in what would be the toughest conference in the state, some would say. And our division matches were always close and hard-fought, and that's what we try to instill in the girls, to fight hard for every single point in every single match that they To win the Liberty Division in the SEC is a big accomplishment, the biggest accomplishment that our team has had in our recent history, and very, very proud of the girls. Unfortunately, our invite's at 8 o'clock, so the girls aren't here yet, but they're on their way. But I'll go through the names now of our varsity team. Our freshmen, Ariana Rajani and Emma Grummet. Sophomores, Funke Ashodi, junior Sarah Cohen, Madison Oliver, Sophia Righiro, Neka Orinza, and our seniors Darlene Follis, who's one of our student liaisons here, Joanna Jaeger and Kaia Baker. They make up our varsity lineup, and like I said, they did a fantastic job this year. I'm very, very proud and honored to be a part of this with them and for them to receive their awards from the board. So thank you, thank you all very much. We really appreciate it.
Okay, ladies. They're studying, which is a good thing. We'll accept that excuse.
Next up is our girls volleyball team. They finished the season in our league with a 12-0 record. We have a coach that took over a failing program, I guess, four or five years ago, and she's now won, this is her third championship she's won. She's one of the hardest-working teachers and coaches we have in West Orange, and I'm very, very proud of her. I'd like to call up Ms. Jackie Cruz.
Nice to meet you. Before I start, I'd like to congratulate everyone that's here tonight who's being honored, all the talented student athletes and just students in general that we have here in West Orange. I would like to thank our superintendent of schools, Dr. Cascone, for the support and the admiration in such a small period of time, Board of Education and Central Office Administration for recognizing us tonight and awarding us with plaques to remember our successful season, our award-winning principal, Mr. War, the best principal in the state, as the kids would say, the coolest, our athletic director, Mr. Bly, who received AD of the Year last year. Thank you for all that you do in helping me become a better leader, and the girls appreciate the pizza. Perry Bashkov, Cynthia Cumming, thank you for supporting us this season and highlighting our success. I know there's a lot going on, but that five-second post really means a lot to them. So they do appreciate it, and I appreciate it myself. It's with great pleasure that I stand here tonight to recognize one of the many sports teams that is extremely dedicated and hardworking. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting the 2019 West Orange Girls Varsity Volleyball Team. Like Coach Mas said, our change of time kind of got lost, so we have half of the team year. But just an overall brief summary, we ended our season 19-6. We went 12-0 in our division, which we were able to capture our SEC Liberty Division, which is a competitive division in the state of New Jersey. And because of our such high standings this season, we are actually moving forward and, well, moving up to the American Division to compete against top caliber teams in the state of New Jersey. Before I present our girls, I would like to give a big shout-out to my assistant coaches, Coach Williams and Coach Graziosa. Coach Williams, she's our head basketball coach. Come on. She is just as competitive, if not maybe a little more than me, I like to say. As Mr. Bly says, we are the dynamic duo, because we want to win. So, well, Coach doesn't want to win. And then we have Coach Graziosa, who's new with us this year, new PE teacher and new coach in our district. She is dedicated, and she kind of balances us out. I think the girls will agree. So, thank you for all that you've done. All right, so now I'd like to present you all with the girls that did all the work on the court. Not everyone is here, but I'm still going to present them. We have sophomore Courtney Adams, senior Anye Bosco, sophomore Amelie Eder, freshman Lucinda Edwards, junior Tracy O'Darris, senior Lindsey Levine, senior Ogechi Nuobu, junior Naya Peterson, senior Jahira Santes de Bon, always have trouble with that one, junior Hannah Schnerman, senior Gabby Uribe, and freshman Francesca Vallejo. Congratulations, girls. Let's keep winning.
I have a state wrestling meeting that I'm late to, but I'm going to run out there. But I would be remiss if I, tonight's the last night for a couple of board members, and these two particular board members have been very, a very big part of the athletic program. There's not too many events they don't attend, and we really appreciate, I really appreciate, the support that they give to the athletic program at West Orange High School. So I'd like to say a personal goodbye and good luck to Mr. Robertson and Ms. Mordecai.
Okay, thanks, ladies. And, okay, next up, just a little introduction, next up is our district supervisor of Business, Career and Technical Education, Ms. Nancy Mullen, to introduce some winners of one of the many competitions that our students in that department participate. And so it is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Mullen.
Here today to present some awards for Family Consumer Science Club, which is called the FCCLA, and there's many competitions that students compete in, things having to do with the early childhood program, fashion, and foods. And they wouldn't be as successful without the wonderful advisor that they have, who's here with us tonight to help present the awards, and that's Ms. Jill Thompson.
Hi, I'm Jill Thompson. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather, so my voice is kind of going. I have the pleasure of being the advisor for Family Consumer Science. As Nancy Mullen had said, we derive our competition and club around the classes of early childhood, fashion, as well as the nutrition program we have. Students, most of which are not here, because their skills lead them to have jobs outside of school and after school and doing good in their community. Some of the competitive events were banner, they had community counts, which was where they collected food for the soup kitchen, as well as baked cupcakes, which were donated to Hurricane Dorian. They did a caregiver carryall and competed in a storybook competition where they made puppets to present to the judges. The two girls that are here, Ashley Azana, she's our club president, as well as Nuhah Ashley competed in the banner project representing West Orange High School, as well as Family Consumer, and Nuhah participated in the community counts, which is where she collected food and volunteered at Tori's Kitchen in Montclair, as well. They made cupcakes, which were sold for Hurricane Dorian relief.
Okay, our next award comes out of Gregory Elementary School, and to present the Community Safety Advocate Award is Mrs. Estupinyan. Mrs. Estupinyan?
Okay, good evening, everyone. I am pleased to be here tonight to recognize one of my third-grade students and her wonderful teacher, who found a clause that the whole class was extremely interested in protesting for. Just to give you a little background, Gabby was waiting at her bus stop one morning along with all her bus mates, and they saw a deer get hit by a bus. And so when they came to school, Gabby was extremely upset and couldn't understand how this could have happened. So I spoke to her, along with her teacher, and we suggested that she enact her friends along with herself to write a letter to the mayor to ask for a deer-crossing sign. So she agreed that that might be a good idea, and we'll see what he has to say. He said there's no hurt in trying. So Gabby and her classmates wrote letters to the mayor, and he was quite taken aback by her letter-writing and responded pretty quickly. And in his response, he stated that he was very moved by the students' outcry and explained that he would be looking into putting a deer-crossing sign up near Gabby's bus stop. And so within a week, there was a big temporary sign put up with the lights that flash for people to slow down, and so there will be a permanent one put up soon. So Gabby, and this is Mr. Blyer, I'd like to have you come on up.
You know, what struck me about that story is, you know, all of us, over the course of our daily lives, see something that makes an impact on us, where you say, gosh, you know, that really makes me feel this way, and I should do this. But then, we don't. And I think the inspiring thing about that story is, it struck her, and she did something about it immediately. A young lady like that, it's inspirational, and it's an example for all of us. So thank you again. Now, this next award is being presented by a administrative institution in the West Orange Public School District, presenting the Kelly Hero Award, and that's Dr. Joanne Polara. Dr. Jo.
Good evening. I'm very, very honored to be here tonight to present this award to one of our fifth-grade students who was able to save a life. Not too many people in their adult years can say that, but Micah can. We talk so much about social and emotional learning, about understanding other people, about empathy. We talk about thinking and doing. Well, this young man thought and did and saved his grandfather's life. He heard him one evening, and his words weren't coming out properly, and he heard something break, and he left his room and went and saw his grandfather standing at the top of the stairs. He had dropped a cup, and his grandfather said, "I'm okay, I'm okay." He wasn't okay, and Micah knew it. And he had the foresight to understand and remember the signs of a stroke. So he helped his grandpa to bed, contacted 911, FaceTimed his mom and his aunt so they could see what was happening, and was able to give the emergency first responders very, very important information, so that grandpa was able to get medication that helped him to survive and thrive. So Micah is a problem solver, a thinker, critical thinker, and a doer, and someone with love in his heart, and someone that we can all be very, very proud of. So I would like to present the Kelly Hero Award to Micah Hampson.
One of the things I often say to the folks around me, whether it's staff or administrative colleagues, is, you know, focus on what's in front of you. Focus on what's happening right around you, in your community, the person seated to your left, the person seated to your right. Don't be distracted by the, you know, the kind of the white noise that's out there. You know, because these are the kinds of stories that inspire us, the kind of stories that are happening all the time within our community, and this is where we should be focusing our energy. So, you know, man, we're super proud of you, and you are a credit to your community. So thank you again. Our next award is presented by the esteemed leader of the Central Six, Edison Central Six, a force of stability and an inspiration down there at Edison. It's a great school, and it has much to do with the leadership of the building principal down there, Mr. Fitzgerald, to present a very special award to a very talented young man in the audience. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Good evening. Come on, guys, you know. You've been to Edison nine out of 10 times. Last start, I tried to get the energy. So I'm going to say, as we always do at Edison, good, better, best, never let it rest till your good is better, and you are the very best. It is my distinct honor and privilege to present an award to Leonardo McCormick. Leonardo McCormick loves cooking, gardening, art, swimming, and helping other people. He's a swimmer on the West Orange Wave and also Montclair YMCA Swim Teams. He gardens with the Essex 4-H and participates in Edison Middle Schools Organization Club and Band, and is a member of the West Orange High School Marching Band pit crew, and helps the Mountaintop League top soccer programs for soccer instruction for kids with special needs. Last week, Chef Leo was the runner-up in Food Network's Chopped Juniors Holiday Gift Basket episode. I actually watched that episode twice, but I'm going to give you a little story as to why I watched it, Leo, in a second, okay? He has several public presentations about food-related subjects the past few years, and thinks educating and informing others about healthy eating is important. He placed third in West Orange Farmer's Market Vegan Chili Cookoff. So this is where I deviate from this. So, as most of you know, I recently got married, so my wife decided that she was going to cook chili tonight. Chef Leo, you need to meet Christopher Fitzgerald, because she might need some lessons on you. Okay? It's not a bad thing. It came out chili soup. He placed third in educating and informing, um, he placed third in the West Orange Farmer's Market Chili Cookoff, and with his brother Nico for the pie contest this fall. Leo wants to be a chef and an agricultural scientist when he grows up. The most important thing that I found when I asked Mr. McCormick to give me a rundown of Leo was this next part. Leo is also the founder of LRM Illustrations. He loves sharing his art, so he can make other people happy. Parts of the proceeds from his food-related art will go to West Orange Food Pantry and Meals on Wheels. Parts of the proceeds of his T-shirts will be donated to raise awareness of mental health and suicide awareness. This can affect many of us at any age. He wants to remind people that what people look like on the outside may not be what they are feeling on the inside. And sometimes you can make a difference by starting your conversation and being nice to each other. Ladies and gentlemen, I present Leonardo McCormick.
All right. So I'm responsible for working with Mr. Fitzgerald relative to his leadership practices. Clearly, I have not been giving him advice, marital advice. You generally want to wait about a decade before you start pulling something like that, at least. But we'll, more on that at a later date. All right. Our next presenter, gentleman who I've gotten to know over the course of my first four or five months, a true gentleman, true character, individual, high integrity, and a great leader. And he's here to present an award, the Scholastic News Reporter. And I think that this is a very relevant award, because we need, you know, honest journalists now more than ever in our country. And so when I see young folks who have an interest in reporting and journalism, we try and really nurture that amongst them. And so presenting this Scholastic News Reporter Award, the Liberty Middle School Principal, Mr. Robert Clans.
All right. Good evening, all. Our teachers admire when our students go above and beyond and extend themselves in a classroom. So in a similar way, when I found out about my honor-
The next awards go to partners in our community. When schools are successful is when the home, the schools, and our communities are working together, are working collaboratively, are working synergistically. We have an amazing community. We have so many partners with whom we could not accomplish our mission without their assistance. And so, I'd like to call up Mrs. Sandra Mordecai to present two awards which she nominated and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not sure if my recipients are here. The light is pretty bright. Is anyone here from the Willshire Grand? Is anyone here from Essex House? Well, I'll accept the award on their behalf. The Willshire Grand, as some of you may know, has been a strong community partner with the school district for several years, making donations of all kinds to help the school community. And Essex House, as many of you may remember, was one of the main sponsors when Kelly School changed its name from Pleasantale to Kelly. They were our catering person there. But so many times, the community is called upon to do many things, and these are two of the companies in town that always step up. Last year, I was fortunate enough to nominate Bethany Center Champions. They do tutoring as well as mentoring, as well as provide a summer camp opportunity for students who otherwise would not have gone, as well as West Orange African Heritage Organization. And they have been in the town for about 20 years, providing tutoring at all seven elementary schools, STEM opportunity at Edison, among many other roles. So, I'm very proud to accept the award tonight on behalf of Essex House and the Willshire Grand, and I'll make sure that they get that.
Just keep me on your toes. So, the next recipient, with a tremendous amount of pride that I introduce this next award, gaining acceptance into the, any one of the United States Military Academies is just an outstanding, outstanding accomplishment. It not only requires academic excellence, exceptional academic excellence, but also a person, a young person who has demonstrated a high level of character and integrity, as well as commitment to their school and their community. So, anytime anyone has the honor of being accepted into one of our country's military academies, we know that this is a person of the highest caliber. And we know that this is a person who's going to go on to continue to represent their school of distinction. And so, I would like to present the next, introduce the next presenter to recognize the one and only Elijah Millington.
Good evening. My name is Alvaro Casal, and I'm a school counselor at West Orange High School. I'm honored to introduce my student, Elijah Millington, a young man with outstanding personal qualities and accomplishments. Elijah is a very modest and humble young man and would be the last person to talk about himself, so that's where I come in. On a personal note, Elijah is truly a wonderful man. What you see is what you get with Elijah. He's genuine, and he is real. He's the type of person who would rather hang out with his family than go to a party. He's the type of person who helps Mom and Dad by watching his younger brothers. In fact, he's the type of person who would assist anyone in need regardless of race, gender, and ethnicity. Elijah is his own person and does not need to follow the crowd. Rather, he beats to his own drum. And the best part of this is that Elijah doesn't know yet how amazing he is. To him, this is his normal. Now, Elijah's not perfect, but Elijah is great and will be a tremendous leader. Elijah has many other admirable attributes that make him highly respected among his peers and teachers alike. He exemplifies the all-around young man. He's a very successful student, a fine athlete, and an active participant in school activities. Elijah is easygoing and respectful, and has demonstrated excellent citizenship and character traits at our high school. He has participated in a number of prestigious programs, including both the Princeton Accelerated Learning Academy Program and the United States Naval Academy Summer Seminar. And what stands out most is his genuine interest in all these programs. His passion for learning and exploring different avenues is real. Elijah is a very well-balanced young man. He continues to be a valuable member of our school's basketball team and track team as well. He is highly respected by his teammates and coaches alike. Anyone knows, anyone who knows this young man will tell you he is an excellent model for his teammates. He displays a second-to-none work ethic and is truly dedicated to the success of the teams. Elijah has also devoted himself to playing the French horn, the trumpet, and the piano, and is also an excellent writer. In fact, he spends his spare time writing stories and books. Now, with all this being said, when I first met Elijah during my freshman meetings in October of 2016, he shared with me his dream of attending the United States Naval Academy. I knew this would be a difficult task and would require hard work and dedication. Elijah was also aware of this. Acceptance into the Naval Academy is reserved only for the select. On November 27, 2019, Elijah Millington was officially offered an appointment to the United States Naval Academy, an honor that is given to the very few. I am proud to have been part of this young man's life and look forward to watching him shine in this quest for greatness. Elijah has made, Elijah, you have made your family proud, you have made your school proud, and you have made the community proud. We would like to all congratulate you on your special achievement.
(Singing) Hang yours away, boys, hang yours away. Let us sail to college, 'cause we sail at break of day. Through our last night, the shore brings to the fore. Till we meet once more, a wish to a happy end. From the autumn on, head to the shore of the ocean. We fight our country battles in the air of land and sea. Pursue fight for right and freedom and to keep our heart beat. We are glad to bring the flag of the United States of America. Through our sandy sea, through our country's heart, and with our country.
Listen, it's live TV up here. I spaced Mr. Casal's name. You know, I'm going to put it out there. And shame on me, right? Because let's give a little props out to our guidance counselors. You know, these are folks who, you know, they have a lot of students, you know, their caseload, as we say, or their, you know, and a lot of students, and they just give themselves every day, all day, you know, whether it's advising kids on college or just being a safe place for kids to come. So, Mr. Casal, we appreciate what you do and all your colleagues do in the guidance So, we have one final community award. I'm not sure if those folks are here, but I am going to call Mr. Robertson up. He nominated the next recipient, and he can speak on her and their behalf.
Thank you. So, it's fitting that Shawna Roth, who I nominated because of her leadership in the town in Girl Scouts, has Girl Scouts right now at a soup kitchen. And it's part of their regular monthly community service that she does with her particular troop. But Shawna's so much more than just, being a troop leader is exceptional, and I feel like I'm still learning. And, but Shawna has gone above and beyond. For over a decade, Shawna Roth has served as not only a troop leader, but the West Orange Volunteer Service Unit Coordinator, developing and managing projects and activities and life skills, civics, STEM and environmental educational activities, community give-back projects, social and emotional enrichment activities and events for literally hundreds, hundreds of West Orange girls, and in partnership with West Orange Public Schools. This award is in recognition of and thanks for her thousands of hours of community service and her tireless dedication to the girls in our community and our community as a whole, and for just helping so many over such a long period of time, and she does it effortlessly and with joy. We have a couple of Girl Scouts here tonight, and we'll be hearing from them later on. But Shawna, we want to thank you so much for your service.
And that concludes the student and community awards portion. We will now transition into the recognition of our outgoing board members. I have been asked and proudly will present their accomplishments, starting with Mr. Mark During his six years as a member of the West Orange Board of Education, Mr. Robertson has served as vice president three times, PR co-chair four times, negotiations committee co-chair twice, legislative committee co-chair once, and served on many district committees for math, diversity, equity, and access, website, and others. In 2014, Mr. Robertson began his first term with the objectives to drive student achievement, strengthen administrative accountability for curriculum and finance, and to ensure that our district pursued best practices in education, delivering a competitive education for all students. Informed and inspired by parent, student, and teacher feedback, Mr. Robertson's advocacy efforts, starting in 2014 for student achievement, helped deliver results in several areas: access to honors courses for Edison Middle School, and expanding honors to all four core subjects, six through eight; standardized test prep, integrated into the curriculum for all kids, starting at Edison; increased rigor in general ed, English, and math. In 2014, Mr. Robertson advocating for the teaching of code and STEAM incorporating engineering principles for K-8, again, starting with Edison. By 2015, code and STEAM with engineering was at Edison. Results: EMS scores substantially improved in 2014 and 15, and parent and student opinions reflected the feeling that students were being challenged more than in the past. For English Language Arts, Mr. Robertson advocated for greater attention to the diversity and rigor in book lists, and increasing the frequency of reading books for fluency, along with greater focus on grammar, vocabulary building, and teaching root words. While much work is still in progress, starting in 2015 and 16, book lists were posted at the website and reviewed in open public meetings, and grammar, vocabulary building, and root words were incorporated into the LA curriculum. For grades six through 12 in 2014, Mr. Robertson began advocacy for creation of a West Orange summer school to help students catch up, graduate on time, or get ahead. In 2018, the Summer Institute was born. Starting in 2014, to level the playing field and enable our children to compete against kids nationwide for top colleges, Mr. Robertson vigorously advocated for an intense SAT and ACT prep course at West Orange High. In 2018, a mandatory SAT prep course launched, and ACT prep is in discussion. After receiving letters from numerous district parents, parents in higher education, and feedback from students regarding challenges in college and career counseling, Mr. Robertson advocated for the review of the guidance department, improved professional development, and the modernization of guidance K-12 to better address college, career, and student social, emotional experiences. By 2016, the guidance became part of the strategic plan, and measures to improve guidance services began. Additionally, guidance adopted some of Mr. Robertson's recommendations to enhance the college and career fair. Mr. Robertson was a leading advocate in the expansion of athletics to provide more developmental and scholarship opportunities for students. He supported the launch of girls' and boys' fencing, volleyball, and girls' lacrosse. Mr. Robertson's advocacy in diversity, inclusion, equity, and access required difficult conversations and sharing experiences of children, parents, and teachers throughout the district. In partnership with Ms. Mordecai's advocacy led to the revival of the diversity job fair after a 15-year drought. In partnership with Ms. Mordecai and Ms. Triggsales, advocacy resulted in budgeted funding for diversity and anti-bias training for all employees, and discussions of how to expand to parents; funding for a restorative justice room at the high school; funding a study on restorative justice and mindfulness; relaunch of the diversity committee, now Diversity Equity and Access Committee with four subcommittees; contributions to the equity plan and proposal to execute an equity policy. As policy co-chair in 2018, and with Ms. Mordecai, Mr. Robertson helped update over 20 policies, including a major overhaul of the special education policy, with feedback from parents and CPAC and WOPAS. As public relations co-chair, in addition to helping to draft a number of ad hoc communications for release, Mr. Robertson has provided recommendations for board member promotions of the district, approach to media relations and publicity with strategic partners, the development of a media and promotional kit focused on cutting-edge departmental efforts and programs, a plan to build a strong alumni network for mentorship, internships, career networking, fundraising, and emotional support. As a participant on the district web design committee, Mr. Robertson has proposed approaches to make our new website a true central communications hub for our schools, and an information and promotional hub for our cutting-edge programs. For fiscal, administrative, operations, and board accountability, Mr. Robertson's advocacy and actions originated the proposal for a focused grant writing, fund development, and corporate partnership efforts, and secured board budget approval. This is now being executed. Made cybersecurity a district priority and part of the overall security plan. Encouraged use of smart goals with clear metrics or deliverables for the board and district. 2018 and 2019 board goals are the most specific and measurable of all goals over six years. Convinced, board and administration demand more added value from vendors, resulting in some savings and fee reductions. Help secure an audit and frequent review of special education legal actions and fees and board legal fees. Support board self-evaluation and board superintendent evaluations. Supports board training and participated in nearly 100 hours of training, achieving board certification in 2016, and master board certification qualifications to take the exam. While no specific plan exists, Mr. Robertson continues to advocate for training and awareness efforts for students, parents, and teachers to address anxiety and depression in elementary and middle school students, and educate on the impact of smartphones, video games, and social media on mental health. Starting in elementary school, Mr. Robertson continues to be a cheerleader for our teachers and an advocate for teacher empowerment and creativity in the classroom. And just a few of my own words. So, I can speak on a number of levels for Mr. Robertson, having obviously interviewed and competed for the position. You know, Mr. Robertson was a rigorous interviewer. Not that the other board members weren't, but I can tell you that he took that responsibility very seriously, and challenged me throughout the interview process to come at the highest level possible. And he's continued to do that, you know, with a high level of intellect. We will miss that institutional and historical knowledge. Those are things you can't replace. And admittedly, I've had some good, deep conversations with him, and I'll miss those as well, but maybe we can catch those at another time.
Dr. Kascón referred to this, that they're caseloads. Guidance is doing a tremendous job, but their caseloads are massive, they're enormous, and we still haven't really addressed early guidance needs in terms of early career development as well as the earlier social emotional needs, K through five. So with all the great successes that we have, we still have much work to do. And I will still try to be that advocate for parents and for kids and be that support for teachers and administrators and for our board members. For our new board members, welcome. I know that you're coming into this with so much positive energy and Gary's, I look forward to getting to know you better and I know that you bring so much. And Jennifer, I've tried to recruit you for like a decade. So I'm so happy that you're finally on the board and you're going to do so many great things. All I can say is get lots of training, train all you can, read everything, even the bills. You never know what you'll find. But have that discipline and you're going to do, bring your own special energy and special knowledge and resources to the board and to our kids. And just want to thank everyone. Thank you for your recognition, thank you for your support with the parents, thank you for what, and kids, thank you for what I've learned from you, thank you for how you've challenged me at points. But most of all, just thank you for the opportunity to serve you. Thanks.
Just a quick, a little digression. If you have good eyes, you might have seen that I've been handing out these little green pins, these little green volunteer pins. I see we have Councilwoman, Mrs. Castellino in the audience. And I attended the township's volunteer recognition ceremony and they were kind enough to present one to me and one for each of our board members. So giving them to Mr. Robertson, Ms. Mordecai on their way off the board and also for those who remain. So to our friends in the township or our partners in the township, we thank you for that acknowledgement. And the nice pin. Okay, we'll now transition to Ms. Mordecai, who has, who I will proudly read her accomplishments for her. Sandra Marie Mordecai started her journey as an education advocate serving on the PTA. Parents advocating for special services and education pass. New Jersey statewide parent advocacy network and the Special Education Leadership Council advocating for students with special education and her son. Sandra was elected to the West Orange Board of Education in 2010 and reelected in a landslide in both 2013 and 2016. She has worked to strengthen public education by serving on the West Orange Board and has been the president twice in 2014 and 2017. Ms. Mordecai achieved certified board member status in 2013, master board member in 2015, and certified board leader in 2017, completing over 60 credits in the Board Member Academy. She has been a member of the West Orange Board's diversity, sustainability, public relations, professional development, and small learning communities and legislative committees, and former board liaison to the West Orange Township Council. That's it. Sandra is currently a member of the Board's negotiation and policy committees. Ms. Mordecai is the immediate past president and current vice president of the Essex County School Boards Association, a member of the County Association Leadership Equity Council and the Board of Directors of the New Jersey School Boards Association, former legislative co-chair and delegate to both the EC SBA and the NJ SBA. She's also a member of the nominating and strategic planning committees of the NJ SBA. Ms. Mordecai has served on the West Orange Human Relations and Public Relations Commissions. She is a member of the West Orange African Heritage Organization and former co-chair of membership. She has participated in both West Orange and Montclair conversations on race programs, received the Quanzo Award of Excellence and the Women's Histories Month Award for outstanding service to the West Orange public schools and the community. Ms. Mordecai is a member of several organizations, including advisory board member of the Stevenson Moses Boxing for Life Organization, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and member of its Economic Development Education Committees, League of Women Voters, New Jersey Citizen Action, Blue Wave New Jersey, board member of the Essex County Chapter of the Jamaica Organization New Jersey, and Public Relations Committee member, member of Warmers High School Alumni Association, New York Chapter, member of Building One New Jersey, and recipient of the annual Shirley Chisholm Education Award in 2017, BONJ Leadership Award in 2014, and the President's Award by the NAACP of the Oranges in 2014. Ms. Mordecai is also the 2018 honoree for the Essex County Board of Chosen Freeholders African American Heritage Month Celebration. Wow. How about a round of applause for that? I'm not done yet, but by golly, that's something. Ms. Mordecai formerly of Kingston, Jamaica, is a longtime resident of West Orange and has two wonderful sons, Nigel and Nicholas, who attended West Orange schools. She holds a Bachelor's of Science degree in management from Rutgers University, her legal degree from Uppsala College, and associate's degree from Essex County College and Business Administration. She's an active member and former vestry board member of St. Luke's Church in Montclair. Wow. I mean, that's really something, isn't it? When you, when you read those, those accomplishments, those accolades, the time, think of the time, really, the hours, right? I mean, Ms. Mordecai, if you could, if you could like just thumbnail a number of hours that you've put in, in all, in all of those, those organizations over the years, tens of thousands, right? You know, and, you know, in a day and age when sometimes, you know, volunteerism or, you know, just kind of pro bono work seems to be, you know, not as prevalent as it used to be, it really is a tremendous accomplishment. And, you know, it's funny because I didn't know you had all those awards, you know, and I think that says something. You know, Ms. Mordecai amongst many other things is, she's, she's a very humble person, which is a quality which, you know, I identify with, and I think it's a, it's a great quality in a leader. And she is that. She's also great fun, you know, we, and she's, she's so well respected within the school boards organizations. You know, we were down at workshop in November and everyone knows Sandra Mordecai. I mean, she's like the, you know, kind of the, the guest of honor wherever she goes. And certainly I know that she'll continue to serve in those organizations. Again, I mean, you know, you lose two board members who have been on the length of time that Mr. Robertson and Ms. Mordecai have been on, and, and that's, that's a lot of knowledge that goes with them. But, you know, we know that as we have other board members, you know, who continue to care, former board members, you know, are always there for resources and, and counsel informal, of course, when we may need them. So Ms. Mordecai, at this time, I'd like to call up your colleagues, Mr. Alper, and to read your resolution, to present you with your commemorative plaque and legislative resolution from the State Senate. And West Orange volunteer pin.
So later on, we'll be introducing this resolution presented to Sandra Mordecai by the West Orange Board of Education, Essex County.
Whereas Sandra Mordecai has served the citizens of her community for nine and a half years as a member of the Board of Education, and as the Board's president for two of those years, and vice president for one of those years, and?
Whereas Sandra Mordecai's service to the West Orange Board of Education includes her leadership and participation in a wide range of committees, including but not limited to policy committee, and?
Whereas Sandra Mordecai has also contributed to public school governance as a certified board member, master board member, and certified board leader, and through service as the president and vice president of the Essex County School Boards Association, as well as the Essex County Representative on NJ SBA's Board of Directors. Now therefore be it?
Resolved that the West Orange Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation to Sandra Mordecai for her exemplary service to the children of West Orange Township and the state of New Jersey, and be it further?
Resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the Essex County School Boards Association.
would like to come up to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Kascón. It's something I'll have to bust you about for the next 10 years. Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to all of you for being here tonight. It has been my humble, humble pleasure and honor to serve you these past nine and a half, almost 10 years. Thank you to the West Orange School District, the West Orange community. Thank you to the administration, faculty, and staff, who I have not had the pleasure of having my sons in your class, except for Dr. Jo, because she was at the high school at the time my sons were at the high school. But I truly do thank you and appreciate you for all your hard work. Assistant Superintendent DeMendes, thank you as well. Thank you, Dr. Kascón. And thank you to my colleagues on the board, who will be remaining and the new ones coming on. I have served in many roles, my three terms on the board, local, local board, and I won't go over the bio that Dr. Kascón read, county school boards, New Jersey School Boards Association, so many committees, the Equity Council Committee being the most recent. As a board member, I have so many accomplishments, I don't know where to start, but I'm going to start with some that I feel very passionate about and very proud of. The student board representatives. It only took me eight years to get that done. When I mentioned this during campaigns earlier on, I was asked, what could they possibly contribute? Well, you let me know what you think of our amazing liaisons. We have received valuable input from our, from air quality issues, later start times, school bus inefficiencies, GPS tracking on buses, so we know where our students are and that they are safe post-November 15 snowmageddon, if you remember that last year. Lack of products in the ladies' room at the high school, surveys of all the students to ensure that all their voices are represented. And thank you so much for your support. We're in our second year of having student liaisons on the board. Truly love them, they are so smart, but we expected them to be smart, with an amazing comprehensive program at West Orange High School. Thank you to Mr. Moore and his team for that, and for, for the middle school faculty as well as the elementary schools. Athletes, I see Mrs. Barnes in the audience. I, I'm one of the board members who worked on the athletic manual that we now have, with a little help from Renard Barnes, who has been a councilperson. The fencing program, which I had the opportunity to see this past Friday, thankfully I went to the pep rally. You know, when I thought about having a fencing program, I was thinking about raising the profile of the West Orange High School to attract more Ivy Leagues, something that Mr. Robertson speaks about all the time, Ivy Leagues. And I thought about programs that they had in other neighboring districts. Fencing is one of them, and so I pushed for that. They also have rowing, but Director Belai hasn't entertained me with that as yet. I know Dr. Kascón is on that. Or the dancing program, took a lot of, a lot of heat for that last year, but as it turns out, dancing is a fine arts requirement, so I'm very proud to have been able to get that in place as well. The ASAP program, Athletic Students for Academic Proficiency, and the B staff for the band students. And my colleagues are in the, in the room as well. Ms. Castellino and I pushed for that, our sons being athletes, and trying to make sure that they're good student athletes. We really pushed for that program. And it's in its fifth or sixth year, I stopped counting, but it's been an amazing program. I also want to recognize my colleagues in the room, Michelle Castellino, who was on the board with us, as, as well as Laura Lab and Ron Charles. There's so many, so many accomplishments, but I couldn't do this without my colleagues on the board, which the new board members will find out. There's no IN team, and you can't get anything passed without your, your colleagues. So the first thing you have to do is to learn how to bond and get along. The Junior Air Force ROTC. Not many know this, but Erin Rice, the former councilman Cirillo's wife, at the time worked with Congressman Pasquale. So I immediately reached out to her, and this was a true team effort across the entire community. Mrs. Lab, Ms. Castellino, everyone who's on the board at the time, surely made sure that Dylan Pennell's vision came to fruition. So many others collaborated to get this done. The first time I heard about that program, I was actually not on the board as yet. I was standing in the hallway with Dylan and his mom, and as soon as I got on the board, I got to work with my colleagues. Televised board meetings. That's something that I put in, in every campaign flyer I had until I won, and it was really, it was really, really remarkable to finally get that done, and I know the seniors truly appreciate that as they can't get too many meetings. We always had them on tape, but you typically need, we televised one or two meetings, but now every single meeting is televised, which is great. The Human Resources Department, we didn't have one when I got on the board. And so there's a special thank you going out to Roger Jacobs, who's a West Orange resident and a colleague of mine from one of the law firms I worked at 20 years ago. He helped at no cost, sat with Fran Deszkes, who was our first HR manager, to put this together, to put an employee manual together, and create what is now our HR department. The Diversity Committee. This was a passion of mine, and I was very sad when we stopped the Diversity Committee, but now I'm happy that it's been revived. So thank you for that, my colleagues. The Sustainability Committee, that has not been revived, but I hope it will be. There, there's, there's so many, so many things we can do with that. I first learned about sustainability from a West Orange resident, Jennifer Dowd, who no longer lives here. She taught me everything I knew about sustainability and the Green Schools Leadership Institute. And Principal Fitzgerald is one of the many that administration who actually attended a five-day workshop to learn all about it. So hopefully that will come back. And at the time, I was pushing for solar panels and didn't have support for it, couldn't get it done. And hopefully somebody may push for that later, I don't know. Coding. Girls Who Code, STEM and STEAM. Thank you to Eve Ballack from Girls Who Code. I met her through the Essex County School Boards Association, she presented for us, and we have Code Hour here as well as Girls Who Code. We also have coding over the summer for Hazel and Washington schools, and I'm really proud of those programs. Speaking of Hazel, when you run for office, no matter how many hills there are, you should ring doorbells. Bringing doorbells, I was appalled at how many people spoke of soggy pizza and cold food. Then I found out why. Hazel Elementary School did not have a kitchen. The food came from either Gregory or West Orange High School. They have a kitchen now. Backpacks. I, I've met the West, the World Organization for Positive Action about five years ago and convinced them that West Orange had a need. And so for five years, they have been donating backpacks to our third and fourth graders in Washington and, Washington and Hazel schools. And the last couple of years, we added Kelly School and in Redwood School with the addition of the Rotary's assistant, assistants. Zero-based budgeting. Several years ago, pushed for this, and with my colleagues' help, we got this done. But a few months ago, I found out that it wasn't consistent, so this year I advocated for it to be one of the budget goals. So this year, zero-based budgeting is a budget goal. Departmentalization for third, fourth, and fifth grade. My ask was to make sure the children in the widest academic gaps have the most qualified teachers or teacher certified in the course subjects to strengthen them at the elementary level so that they didn't fall at middle or high school. You have to build up on a strong foundation first. And so we have departmentalization at the fourth and fifth grades. And, and as we mentioned last week in one of the board meetings, we talked about evaluating programs, so I hope to, to hear how that program is doing and how we can make that stronger. Summer school credit recovery and summer step-up program. When I got on the board, I had no idea that our students went to Bloomfield for summer school and add a cost to them. Fast forward a few years and strong advocacy and Bloomfield closing their program, West Orange has its own. This should also generate revenue as other districts come to us for summer credit recovery. A few years ago, we were working on a business plan under a former superintendent, and Dr. Kascón, you have to dig that back up. Our teacher leaders, a phrase I borrowed from a friend, have been conducting professional development for several years, and this could also be another source of revenue. I have to say thank you to Kathy Garrison for believing and investing in our students. We have the Essex County Links Program at the high school, and for those who don't know it, it's a roadmap to college as well as a leadership program for young girls. Restorative justice room. Mr. Moore's not here tonight, but we, we all advocated strongly for this in this year's budget, and I'm hoping that he'll get his room soon so that he can help our students cope. One-to-one devices. When I first ran and I spoke of one-to-one devices, I was actually heckled by debate audiences. Now fast forward a few years, every student has a device. Some parents don't like it, but it's the 21st century and all students should be prepared. The five-letter word most education professionals and parents hate, PARC, forced us to get one-to-one devices eventually. So now we have devices for every student, and so does the other 580 districts across New Jersey. The ESIP, the Energy Savings Improvement Plan. This, a constant review should be made of this program to make sure that we are getting our guaranteed savings. When I started out advocating for solar panels, when almost no other district was, I didn't get it done for a variety of reasons, but I learned a lot in the process about sustainability and environmental issues from John Henry at ERIC, who is now the STEM fellow at New Jersey School Boards. Hopefully that we can continue that partnership with New Jersey School Boards as it relates to STEM and STEAM, and now there's a relationship with the military. Orton Gillingham. When my son was in middle school, he was struggling as he was diagnosed with dyslexia. When he got to high school, we founded about a program and I put him on a waiting list for Orton Gillingham through Fairleigh Dickinson University. So he was one of the test kids for that pilot program that FDU started. So I'm happy now that it's at Kelly School, as I've been pushing for that for years, and hopefully it will be district-wide across all seven elementary soon. His reading levels grew in leaps and bounds in a few semester, semesters, and I, I just couldn't believe the growth. Kane University. We've connected with Kane University through a lot of advocacy and a lot of same thing, ringing doorbells, meeting residents who had access. And so 28 teachers from our district took Holocaust studies at Kane University to receive six master's degree credits at no cost to the district. And this relationship is ongoing. I think it's the third or fourth year. And I thank Mosey Scott for that and Dr. Toby, his wife, for staying the course. Montclair State. We have a partnership with Montclair State for autism and mental health. Thank you, Kelly School parent, Daniel Dorsh. I don't know if you know, that's where that came from, Dr. Jo, but Daniel Dorsh is the parent who suggested that to me, and that program has been around now for three or four years. I recently connected with another Montclair State person, and hopefully Dr. Kascón will follow through on that for partnership for music. Anthony, Anthony, I can't pronounce his last name, but I call him Anthony M., is a South Orange Board of Education member and also the, the dean of music studies at Montclair State. This past year, when we had budgetary cuts and we were in danger of cutting our music program, I immediately reached out to see how we could partner with Montclair State to provide a pipeline, because they have a fantastic program there, and many of our students attend Montclair State for the music anyway. So hopefully that will come to fruition. I also reached out to Vince Ector and his wife Karen Ector, who run a program called Arts Education for Children in New Jersey, and hopefully that will come to fruition as well. I could go on and on and on, but there's, there's so many things here. One thing that I'm hoping to see, and it started, sensory paths in all elementary schools. I also advocated for a sensory room, which we haven't gotten as yet, but hopefully further down the road, a sensory room will, will come to fruition as well. I, I, I will, I will say that, you know, that this is, this has been a great, great journey for me, and I really should say thank you to my family, because it's been a huge sacrifice. And thank you to all my friends who supported me over the years. I wasn't going to cry. I've met so many wonderful people, so, so many dedicated school board members over the past nine years, who truly care about students and their dedication, and they're now my friends and family. I'm very happy to have served you, and I thank you so much for your confidence in me. Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to invite, just like to open the public comment, specific to anyone that wanted to come up and had words they'd like to say to Vice President Mordecai or Board Member Robertson. And we, we do have some refreshments after public comments, so we invite anyone that stayed to join us for coffee and cake and cookies. But at this time, anyone who'd like to come up and speak, we'd love to have you. Come on up. Board members, if you'd join me at the dance. Ms. Castellino.
Michelle Castellino, Valley Way. So great to see everybody here tonight.
Folks, if we could quiet down a little so we can hear the comments, that would be great. Thanks.
Just had to come in to come show my appreciation for two of my former colleagues who I enjoy so much working with. Mark, I met you, I think it was at Edison Middle School one night when I was campaigning and you were coming to Back to School Night, and right away I just saw how passionate you were. You just came up and had a million questions for me when you saw me, and, you know, just your excitement and your dedication to the students and your passion has always, always made such a great connection with you. And all, and you always talk to so many folks on the blacktop, and you always knew, which is very important for board members to know what's going on with especially the homework. and how much time you really take away from your families. And I know for both of you, it was hard to move on, but we're getting older and that point in our lives where we're looking to spend more time with our parents, with our family, with our kids. So I know how emotional this is for you. And Sandra, you're one of our most decorated board members. You always had your hand up volunteering to go down to the state and to get involved on the county level, and which is something I would honestly never volunteer for, having so much else going on. But just so much time, and just you could see by both, with both of you, just the list of all that you've accomplished, and so much appreciate, and I miss working with both of you. And I know that the township is, the district rather, is really losing two great, dedicated board members. So thank you so much, and lots of luck. Welcome to the club. It's not that bad. Let me tell you, after 10 years, you learn to disengage. I thank you both for your service, but remember, it's the institution that is the standard. We're transient. Staff members, board members, we come and go. Children come and go. The institution is the one that will always be here. And we're just happy to be part of it and hope that as we leave, we found things a little better than we arrived. I'm not going to go into all the specifics of everybody's accomplishments, because everybody as a board member does a lot. And again, as Michelle had said, or Sandy said, I'm sorry, you have one voice, but you need five. You need to learn to work together to come to successful resolve. So I thank you all. It's been a while since I've been to a board meeting. The music, I don't know, I felt like I was at a lounge in 1960. I don't know what that's all about, Cookie. I mean, come on. Things have changed a little bit. And the young man who was acknowledged tonight, Leonardo, I'm not sure if he's still here, but one thing that he left off, he was my judge at my dog parade. That's what I got into these days. Thank you, Leonardo, an excellent judge. But again, I want to thank you both for your service. Sandy, 10 years with your state and your county associations, it didn't just stop here. And, you know, I think the best part about being a board member are two things, handing the diplomas out and the conference in October, because that's where you really get to engage and have a good time. And hey, Megan taught us to play craps, and, you know, we learned a lot there. So anyway, thank you both. And again, it's not that bad. You will disengage rather quickly, trust me. Good night.
Good evening. Ron Charles, Colonial Wood Drive. I just wanted to come tonight and extend my congratulations to Mark first, for your six years on the board and serving the town and the district. Next year, we'll get to work together with the cheerleaders, so that'll be a good thing, I'm sure. To Sandy, your years of service to the district, both on the local level, the county, and even on the state, that's certainly commendable. And, you know, throughout the state, as Dr. Cascon said, is that everyone knows if you're from West Orange, everyone says, you know Sandra Mordecai, in a good sense. So that's something that you should be proud of, I know you are, and all the accomplishments that you guys have. I do like the crew team, though. I was a member of the Belvo Crew Team, so if Dr. Cascon, if we can get on that, that certainly is, you know, a big thing. But I just wanted to come again and extend my congratulations, and as Laura said, welcome to the retirement club. So take care. Good night.
I am now a former, this is one I just want to thank you both, Sandra and Mark. I didn't say my name first, Airs School, Cogarty Avenue. I just want to thank you both. I'll leave you both with the story. You had huge accomplishments, only probably a small fraction were said, but I just remembered the amount of community advocacy that you both had. I've been here 14 years, and you guys really made me feel like a community member. I knew what was going on. Sandra, I don't know what I'm going to do without your emails. Someone has to take, you know, board members, someone has to take up that charge. I knew exactly what was going on in every meeting because of you. Thank you. Not that the rest of the board didn't have great communication, but Sandra is the best. Mark, you know each other from Scouts and everything else. I'll leave you with the story. I was utterly frightened when my son was going to high school. Not that it's not a great high school down the street, but I was really nervous. This is a big deal. Mark, I think he spent like an hour and a half going through every single possible option for Michael. He knew Michael really well, but my God, I think all of you have a lot of good choose the film. I am so thankful for you both. Hope that you decide maybe one day to come back. Not that I don't like you all, but I love you both. So please don't be a stranger, and thank you both very much.
Hi, Cynthia Cumming. I just want to thank you, Mark, and I want to thank you, Sandra. You've been supporters of me. I know the past couple of years weren't easy, and I appreciate that. And I know how hard this job can be, and, you know, you battled through, and I feel really good about where we're heading, and you guys had a lot to do with that. And I know I will be seeing you. I don't expect you to disappear off the face of the earth, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brent Ray Priscad, and I just want to sincerely congratulate both of you for serving on the board and for doing public servants. And I really want to thank Mr. Robertson. My family and I purchased a house here seven years ago, and I met him outside my son's school, on his first year at school, and I spoke to him. And I later sent him an email, and he replied. A lot of elected officials, I'm still waiting for some people to reply to me, I never have, who actually replied and said, yeah, well, let me tell you about this one, let me tell you about this other program, and here's something else that your son might be interested in, and this is how this works, and this is how something else works. And he was, as others have mentioned, the institutional knowledge is great in Mr. Robertson. And I thank you, I want to thank you for just being such a very good board member and for replying. I was so pleased with you, that I was happy to walk some streets with you, and every time a teenager opened the door, they knew who he was. Oh, Mr. Mark. And my son still refers to you as Mr. Mark, and he said to tell you congratulations. And Ms. Mordecai and I see each other an awful lot at WOAA, the West Orange African Heritage Organization. She is tremendously respected, and I respect her, and I wish you both the best in your post-board careers. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Joe. I live across the street there, at Kelly Elementary School. I just wanted to thank Mark and Sandra for your continued support over the years that you've both been on the board. As an administrator, it's been very, very helpful to know that we have a board that supports our administrators, our teachers, and of course, our students on behalf of our students. And since both of you were members of the board during our most important, most exciting day, where we had lift off and changed alimony, and it's done a wonderful, wonderful thing for our student, staff, and faculty over the years, I just wanted to give you each one of our little Kelly pins, little rocket ship pins, and so that you can remember our very special day. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dagmar Hobson. Most people probably know me. Thank you for your service, Mark, but I, most of my remarks are for Sandra, who has been my friend for so long now. We started this journey 10 years ago, and it was, in the beginning, it was just Sandra and I. Every night and all weekend, week after week after week, campaigning and plotting and attending all the events, and it was an uphill struggle, but we worked hard and we got her in there. Then the next campaign was a lot easier, because now people realized what a great job she does and what a great board member she is. So we had some help. And then the third election, I barely had to do anything, because there were so many people who were helping us. So I just wanted to tell you thank you so much for your service and what you've done for the schoolchildren and for the town of West Orange. Thank you so much. Love you.
Anyone further for Mark or Sandra? Seeing none, we will take a break for cake and coffee and whatever else you'd like out in the hallway. Those of you who are in front of us, please save some for the board members.
Just one thing. I was remiss. The one person who enabled me to do all that I do, my wife.
Dr. Cascon.
Sir Alper. So to conclude the superintendent's report, we have part three, which is the HIB report. As pursuant to previous procedure, we have approval for cases which were brought forth on the ninth, and we have the introduction of new cases, four, one from Hazel, three from Liberty, one which was unconfirmed, and three which were confirmed. Two are part of the same case, two different offenders, but same case, and one was a distinct case.
Okay.
I have reviewed the information, spoken with both building principals, and concur with the findings.
All right. Up next, questions and comments from the public on agenda items. If you have anything to say on anything on tonight's agenda, you can come on up and have three minutes. Just let us know your name and address, and Ms. Flores will run the clock. Anyone on agenda items? Nope. All right. Seeing none, we'll move into the rest of the agenda. May I have a motion for personnel items one through four and the addendum?
I'll make a motion. Ladies first.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank on item C, Play Unified. I wanted to thank Dr. Cascon for moving forward with that. I just wanted to recognize those folks that are being, that are involved with it, and thank them for putting in that time.
Play Unified was something we heard about in Old Bridge when we went to, you know, visit to see what Dr. Cascon was doing there, when we were still in the interview process. And, you know, it was one of the things that we were really excited about. So it's great to see it here.
Sure. I'd like to recognize Laurie Graham, who's retiring after 21 and a half years from Family and Consumer Science. Congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for your service and dedication to our school district. And we have one more. On page 400B, there's a lunch aid position there. This is not about the position, but it's a reminder for me to ask you about lunch aid training. I know we talked about it briefly in another regard, but just want to make sure that lunch aids are aware of the policies at the high school and the board level and the chain of command when it comes to student discipline during recess or anything like that. I know parents have asked before, how much training lunch aids get? So just want to keep that on the radar for next year when lunch aids are getting training. Thank you.
Ms. Flores, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Pass.
All right. Next, finance. May I have a motion for special services, items one through four, and business office one through 11?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple. Dr. Cascon, if you could please check on Shepherd School. I know the spelling is incorrect, but I thought we weren't using Shepherd School anymore for various reasons. Obviously, I'm fine with it, because this is too late enough for that, but I'd just like you to check about.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. And the tuition adjustment, oh my God, this is ridiculous. I know we talk about this every meeting, but wow. If you build it, they will come. If we continue to build out our program, we won't spend $230,000 at Calais or $230,000 Partnership in Education or half a million dollars at Spectrum 360. So keep looking to the future to build that program up and keep those monies here in our account.
You know, given that that's, and thank you for saying that, Ms. Mordecai, given that that's been a longstanding discussion, and this is now an opportunity for Dr. Cascon, for you, along with the new board, to take a look at, and along with special services, Ms. Gogarty, to take a look at the strategic plan. If we were to see anything happen in that regard in terms of providing services in district even five years from now, that would have to start now. Do you have any considerations there, any thoughts?
Yes, you know, I'm glad you mentioned that. So I think that we had a watershed moment this, several weeks ago. I was meeting with some administrators, and we were discussing one of our in-district special education programs. And, you know, we started talking about, well, this, you know, we might have to, this student, we might have to, you know, to send this student to an out-of-district placement. And I said, what do they do there? Like, what does that look like there? What services and resources do they have there? Because that's exactly what it should look like here. And if it does, then we don't need to send them out. Now, there are certain cases where the student's needs are specialized to the point where it's, it just, it's actually in the child's best interest for them to be in an institution, in a school or a learning institution that's outside of our schools. But outside of, I would argue, those few exceptions, it's really about going to these places, seeing what they're doing, and then replicating it here. And yes, would it be more expensive than our current operating costs? Yes, but it would still represent the savings for the district. So I am absolutely 100% seeing that and have had those conversations with Ms. Gogarty, because I think, you know, our directors of special services are always saying, well, you know, that's, I said, listen, you know, you have to dream. You have to see a vision, and that vision should be aligned with what the best institutions for students like that are doing out of district, and that's what we need to be doing in district. So 100% of that.
Dr. Cascon, I know the speech was quite long, so I didn't want to add to it, but one of my mentors is a board member in another district who's been board president for 12 years, and she mentioned to me that in Glen Ridge, they use therapy dogs. So this discussion reminds me of my very first year on the board, when I voted no for rocking horse hypotherapy, because nobody could tell me what it was. It was $7,000 for a child. And Glen Ridge is using therapy dogs and not rocking horse hypotherapy, so that's a huge cost saving if you were to look at that. And I know I had discussions with you about that, and I found out that we actually do have a therapy dog here. So I think we need to prove that, because I don't think the board knew that we had a therapy dog in district. So we need to prove that, whenever we get a chance, and expand on that program, because I actually like that program.
Yeah, and actually, therapy dogs and therapy pets are being utilized broadly, even at the university level. So, absolutely.
Excellent. One thing I would just wanted to point out, item two, where we're designating some out-of-district placements as now being funded by IDEA, previously approved as LEA-funded. LEA means Us, Local Educational Authority. If you add all that up, that comes out to $1.5 million. And what this actually is, is a savings to the district. This is money that was coming from district funds, that's now coming from federal funds. And I understand that Kristen Gogarty and Anna Flores are really responsible for doing You have to see a vision, and that vision should be aligned with what the best institutions for students like that are doing at a district, and that's what we need to be doing in district. So 100% of that.
Dr. Cascone, I know my speech was quite long, so I didn't want to add to it, but one of my mentors is a board member in another district who's been board president for 12 years. And she mentioned to me that in Glen Ridge, they use therapy dogs. So this discussion reminds me of my very first year on the board when I voted no for rocking horse hypotherapy, because nobody could tell me what it was. It was $7,000 for a child. And Glen Ridge is using therapy dogs and not rocking horse hypotherapy. So that's a huge cost saving if you were to look at that. And I know I had discussions with you about that, and I found out that we actually do have a therapy dog here. So I think we need to prove that, because I don't think the board knew that we had a therapy dog in district. So we need to prove that, whenever we get a chance, and expand on that program, because I actually like that program.
Yeah. And actually, therapy dogs and therapy pets are being utilized broadly, even at the university level. So, absolutely.
Excellent. One thing I would just wanted to point out. Item two, where we're designating some added district placements as now being funded by IDEA, previously approved as LEA-funded. LEA means Us, Local Educational Authority. If you add all that up, that comes out to $1.5 million. And what this actually is, is a savings to the district. This is money that was coming from district funds, that's now coming from federal funds. And I understand that Kristen Gogarty and Anna Flores are really responsible for doing a lot of the legwork to get this done. So I want to thank both of them for that and just point out to everyone how great it is to see that. And with that, I think we're ready to vote.
Merklinger? Yes. Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. At this point, before we do reports, I'd like to make a motion to formally introduce the resolutions for our outgoing board members that we previously read.
Some of.
I'll second.
All right. I assume we don't need to discuss those.
Thank you.
Let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Well, we're not to abstain on mine and say yes on Sandra's.
You say yes on Sandra's. Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, on Mr. Robertson, and I'll abstain on mine.
President Alper?
Yes, on both. And may I have a motion for reports, items one and two?
I'll motion.
Second.
All right. Ms. Flores.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay. At this time, petitions and hearings of citizens. Any topic you'd like to speak about, you can have three minutes. Just let us know your name and address, and you can talk.
And if you have three minutes per person, could you both?
Yes. If you've got things to pass off, you can do your three and then hand off to your next one.
We have packets for all of you, so we're just going to give.
Fantastic.
We are 7th grade West Orange Girl Scouts, Laura, Jamie, and Serena. We are here to talk about the girls softball program in West Orange. We all play soft, we all play softball, and we have noticed that there are some major differences between the boys' baseball program and our softball program, also softball programs in other towns. What is the Silver Award? A Silver Award is the highest award a Girl Scout cadet, which we are, can earn. To earn this award, a group of one to four girls work on fixing a problem in their community. Because we all play travel softball, we decide to, we decide to focus on fixing the softball program in West Orange. Some things that we thought, some things we thought that would be beneficial are as follows. Getting helmet racks and bat racks, roofs for the dugouts, and getting someone to cut and maintain the fields often. Also, possibly getting a working pitching machine, like the one the baseball program has. A pitching machine would be expensive and is not a top priority, but it would help our softball program improve.
As West Orange travel players, we have witnessed the differences between the dugouts in towns, in other towns. Most of the other dugouts, we have been to have a roof, bat, and helmet racks. They are nice, safe, and organized. Our dugouts have a fence and a bench. This is embarrassing for when other towns come to our town and have to put their stuff in this area that we call a dugout. It is also very unsafe when foul walls reach the dugouts. We have also noticed how other teams have pitching machines. These teams crush the ball every time they are at bat, and our team is cracking under the pressure of a fast pitcher. Our town can benefit a lot from this. Young girls play softball. Having roofs can protect them from becoming injured at a young age and potentially never playing softball again. Having roofs can protect everyone, and it means fewer potential lawsuits in the future. Also, having a pitching machine helps girls learn how to bat. These four- to five-year-olds are learning how to bat at a young age so that they can be better softball players when they get older. Also, a pitching machine would help older girls learn how to bat when a fast pitcher is up instead of striking out every time. Something we have also noticed is that it's not just other towns that have better softball fields. There are better softball fields in West Orange, too, mainly the PAL field and high school field. The baseball players get to play at this wonderful field with giant dugouts and easy to, and an easy-to-play diamond. However, we have noticed that not only do just the PAL teams get to play on that field, but they also get to play at Degnan as well. The softball players only get to play at Degnan and Kelly while the boys get to play at any field they go to.
Finally, we want to point out the differences between the fields and facilities in the high school girls softball program and the high school boys baseball program. The high school girls softball team plays at Degnan Field, the same field we use for our travel softball games. This field has no dugouts, no roofs, no dugout roof, no bats and helmet racks, poor field maintenance and drainage, no scoreboard, wickety stands, and half the lights are burnt out, making it, making night games most, more difficult and almost impossible. In contrast, the high school boys baseball team field features spacious, well-equipped dugouts, well-maintained artificial turf, an electronic scoreboard, newer wheelchair-accessible stands, and a well-lit, well-lit playing field, day or night. The high school softball and baseball fields are completely incomparable, and that is unfair and inequitable. In the handout we have given you, we show a comparison between the fields at Kelly and Degnan, which we use, and the PAL and high school baseball fields, which we want our fields to look more like. We aren't asking for turf, just a safe and better playing field. We would like to request that we formally meet with the board in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I was going to say, I actually think I can answer a lot of some of the concerns. As many of you know, I'm involved with the baseball program. I will tell you that softball is on the docket of things to be looked at right now. That's something the recreation department has been looking at. As you know, there's a lot of fields in town, but they're not all school district fields. So the PAL field is actually owned by the West Orange PAL, which means the volunteers of the PAL organization are the ones who are responsible for actually maintaining that field. So that actually is separate from the school district and from the town. That is done strictly by the folks that, my husband being one of them, that I know who goes and breaks that field, so I can attest to that. So Degnan Field is a multifaceted field. It is, in baseball, it's used for 50, for 50/70. It's a 50/70 field, whereas the PAL field is 46/60. So depending on your age range for baseball is where you play. And so with, the PAL field can only be used for ages 10 and under. And because it's a direct mound, it doesn't move. At Degnan, you have a portable mound, because you can play either 46/60 or you can play 50/70 on it. It's also utilized by softball. When the school district worked with the town to turf all of the fields, so Lincoln Field, which is the soccer field, it also was lined for softball. So if you notice in the corner towards the turnoff gym, there actually are lines for softball. The original intent was to play softball there on that turf field. It wasn't utilized, something, I don't know if something was set off, and so don't quote me on that. I don't know if it's the way the lights are set, but instead, the coach decided to use Degnan Field, so it became a multi-purpose field. So Degnan Field is actually a town field. It is, does not belong to West Orange High School or to the school district. So like I said, it's used for multiple sports. The PAL uses it, and the travel baseball program uses it for 50/70, which is for our 11 and 12-year-olds. It's also, we share it with the softball program, as well as the high school softball town program. West Orange Recreation Department and MTL both have parts with softball. And then the high school field, like I said, there is, the baseball field, it's 60/90. But because softball has, does not have a mound, that's the difference between the two fields. But that all being said, we also know that Kelly Field is used for girl softball, the younger youth provisions. And so during the winter months, I will tell you that most of the fields are not maintained. But Kelly School is on the list of school of fields I know to be looked at to update. Degnan Field is also on the docket to be updated, from what I understand with the town, in meeting with the folks over there. So I will say that it's definitely, there is awareness of the fields, there's an awareness to update it. I will say that the softball program is run by MTL, and so they might be able to help you out with in terms of equipment. That's definitely something we can look at as, you know, something where we can partner with them, just because everyone does use a field, it's a shared service. But that's something that's definitely, there's an awareness about and it's out there. But I definitely think it's great that you guys came up and brought all these points up, and it's definitely something I'm going to look at and bring back to the folks that I work with, with all three organizations, and just make sure that you guys have a program. I know I was asked to come help too with the child program potentially, so. More to come on that. You know, long-winded response, but I want to make you feel like you're, you are heard and it is, there is an awareness about it.
And Dr. Cascone, maybe we can have our buildings and grounds folks touch base with our partners in the township, and maybe MTL and PAL can come in and we can sort of get a sense of what's where and what's on the schedule for when and sort of, you know, be able to report back what the fields are. I do want to point out, though, this is one of the best presentations I think I've seen come before the board from anyone, including vendors and many, many people who are much older and paid to be here. So, thank you. This is, this is, it's really good to have, you know, everything right in front of you with the takeaway and pictures and...
Mr. Alper?
You guys should be proud.
Mind if I just say a few words to the ladies? Thank you. Appreciate that, what you came and spoke about. As a superintendent, as a father of three girls, and also as the recently appointed district Title IX officer. And if you're not familiar with Title IX, which you probably are, it's federal legislation which, you know, really mandates equity in programming, athletic programming for male and female athletes. So what I can tell you based upon your presentation, and I made a note of it on my pad here, is that I intend to have a follow-up conversation with our athletic director. I want to really understand, and I can't obviously speak to, you know, necessarily to facilities that are outside of my jurisdiction. We do have some shared services and we can do that. But certainly anything that's under my purview, under my jurisdiction as the superintendent in terms of equipment and things of that nature, I will have a follow-up meeting with Mr. Bly. And we will ensure that, that we rectify as much as we can, if in fact there are disparities as you're indicating, we'll rectify as much as we can within this budgetary cycle to correct any disparities that exist, and then keep a critical eye moving forward in the budgetary process to ensure that any remaining gaps are closed. So you have my word that I will work on that for you as your superintendent, and I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. Thank you.
First, I just want to say, I am just bursting over with pride, and you're amazing. Your Girl Scouts are fantastic, and this is what Girl Scouts is all about. And you've done a great job of vividly depicting two types of equity issues. One is literally gender equity issue that is also a potentially Title IX issue. And the other is one about competitive equity. And if you're going out to compete against other teams, being able to have, you know, equivalent resources is an appropriate ask. And Dr. Cascone, you, some of this, you'll find that with, while we have the number-one girls athletic program in Essex County, when it comes to baseball versus softball, the inequities have actually existed for some time. I believe the girls pitching machine was broken for three years. I don't think the boys pitching machine was ever allowed to be broken. And so there are real issues. I was aware of before. Some past girls softball players made me aware, and I've reported it, but that was, you know, two superintendents ago. And so thank you, thank Ms. Merklinger for that detailed, knowledgeable explanation, and thank you, Dr. Cascone, for taking this up. I think part of the girls ask, these Girl Scouts ask in addition, though, is the opportunity, while they've given this to us, to be able to do a follow-up meeting. So, and the other thing I would raise, too, is while all these fields are not under our jurisdiction, because we have to be the guardians of equity with all of our strategic partners, it is still appropriate to say, how can we, working together with PAL, with Mountain Top, with the township, establish equity for girls softball and ensure that we're also giving them the resources to be as competitive as they can be, both of which are in the interest not only of the girls, but of the township and the school district?
From my own knowledge and understanding, a baseball field has a mound. Softball does not. Logistically, if a baseball field is built and there is a subs, there's another, and I guess I'm trying to understand, how would we make that, where, it's not trying to be equal, but it's just that it's...
Dugouts, stands, and other, and the field quality.
But I'm saying, just the field itself.
I understand.
We can't change.
Not that aspect of it, but...
Understood. That's what I'm...
That'll be part of the conversation.
But...
But dugouts, stands, you know, the, 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 all of that stuff.
But it's also based on volunteering, volunteerism, and the work they're doing, right?
Not just volunteerism. I remember when our good mayor had the town actually pay to build the bleachers for the baseball team. Okay, so that's for the baseball team. So all I'm saying is, I'm sure that when it's brought to the attention of those involved, that similar resources can be...
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that we're being also realistic and logical to the sense of one field may not be able to be adaptable, but another field could be, that we could update to...
Look at all the resources.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, I agree. 100%.
Yep.
Thank you so much. I am immensely proud of you. We all are.
Real quick, do you, young ladies, all go to the same school? Okay. So, you know, maybe, were you looking to have a follow-up meeting with myself, superintendent, or the board, or? Okay. Okay. Well, you know, it might be easier, maybe, if I came to, I might be a good initial contact person. I could come to your, your Girl Scout meeting. I mean, that's, you're all in the same place at that point, right? So you have my email, maybe reach out when you're ready for a meeting after the New Year. I'd be happy to come to the meeting and hear a little bit more about your ideas.
Thank you. Anyone further for public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll close that, and it's board member reports. Ms. Triggs Scales.
Just before the young ladies leave, I just want to tell you how impressed I am with your presentation, as the other board members have said, but I just want to weigh in. And your, your oral presentation was very impressive. I liked the way you broke it up, and you made your points. And Title IX, as Dr. Cascone said, has been around for a very, very long time, and so it's really important that we're paying attention and that, as the board talks about diversity and access and opportunity and equity, this is a perfect example of what we're talking about as an initiative for the board, to make sure that students get what they need, and that's what equity is all about. So, now tell me about the Silver Award. I just want to know. You're going for the Silver Award based on this project? So congratulations, and we'll do whatever we can to make sure you get it and bring it home. Okay, great. Thank you.
I know, I, as soon as this meeting ends, I'm working on that.
Dr. Cascone, young ladies, please leave. Dr. Cascone, I believe one of you got an award tonight, so let's have a group picture with the board members, as everybody else did tonight.
I believe. Yes, sir.
This has been on the docket, but we had a member of the public that's asked for to make a brief public comment on the outgoing board members.
Um, and really excited about the work of that committee. And along with that, we were, um, we have budgeted for diversity training, and as we approach the mid-year, um, January, we have six months left, so really interested in what we have planned, um, to make sure that we get the majority of our staff trained. And I would like to suggest that the training begin with the board, um, as well, um, since we're talking about equity and diversity training, I think we need to set the example and that we are all up to speed on what's important as we deliver the best of services to each and every one of our students. The health and wellness committee was something that we wanted to get going, and we still have time to work on that. I kinda feel, um, as we get to January, that it, it will be my anniversary on the board, and so nine years looking back and six years looking back, I'm going, okay, that year went by really fast. How much did we get done? And what must we do in the next six months, um, for this fiscal year? And, uh, the policy committee, which I was on this year, and I, I'm disappointed that we did not get more done. Ms. Mordecai and I were on that committee, and we started out like gangbusters and, uh, so we, as we move forward, Ms. Mordecai, I assure you, I will continue to, to push if I'm on the policy committee, which I'd like to be, as we move forward, um, so that we can cover some more ground and get that done. Uh, okay, so I'd like to, at this point, just share my appreciation to Mark and Sandra. Big shoes to fill, realizing that, um, six years, nine years, that's a lot of time, that's a, a fourth grader's lifetime, um, for Sandra and, uh, Mark, what are you doing down here?
I'm just shaking my head and listening. It's been a...
And a first grader, Mark, you've developed a first grader, and Sandra, you actually have a fourth grader.
I like first grader.
And so, um, that's a lot of time, and your families are here tonight, and I wanna thank you for sharing, um, your loved ones with the township and the school district. And I've said since I got on, I don't know, I'm retired and, and single, and so I think I have a whole lot more time, although I'm pretty busy, but I don't know how you do it with families. I honestly don't know how you do it and how you work and maintain that schedule. So, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for your commitment and your dedication and your selfless devotion to the education here in town. Um, I think there was one more thing that I just wanted to mention. Um, Dr. Kascun, I was asked the other day about the, um, Every Student Succeeds Act family or community committee. Um, I remember asking Mr. Rutske about that, um, a couple of years ago because I wanted to participate on it, and here in New Jersey, I believe, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, that school districts are supposed to provide opportunities for the public to participate, um, to some degree, with the school district, making sure that we are providing our students with, um, the opportunities to succeed. So is that, am I correct, is that something we're supposed to do?
Right, so that, actually I have a, uh, an email in my inbox from an interested, uh, community member, um, inquiring about potentially participating. I know that, um, under, uh, NCLB, that there were obligatory parental involvement components under Title I and Title III, um, and there, there could be some subtle changes in that under ESSA. I know like the NCLB legislation, it does place a priority on parental involvement, but I'm just doing some research on that to determine if the requirements for parental involvement have changed or have expanded beyond just Title I and Title III. So, I'm gonna look into that further tomorrow and have an answer for this, um, interested party.
Okay, we may be sharing the same interested party.
I believe so.
However, I did inquire, as I said, of, of Mr. Rutske because I wanted to participate, and this would have been, um, two years ago. So thank you for, for following up on that. And I believe that's it, I always think of something after I'm done.
Of course.
Just, just a final thought on that, on Mr. Trigscouts. I think that, uh, you know, when you look at, for example, our Equity and Access Committee, um, you, you look at our allergy awareness group, um, I believe that, you know, is it going to be a, an ESSA parent involvement committee per se, or is it really about the spirit of the legislation which really charges school districts for creating varied opportunities for parents to be part of and help inform the decision-making process? I would argue it's the latter, but I will check into the legislation specifically to see if we need an actual ESSA body per se.
Great, and I know what it was, the one other thing, um, I know that we're going to have a much more, um, in-depth Amistad presentation coming up, so I look forward to that in the new year as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and Merry Christmas, uh, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year to everyone out there.
All right. Ms. Mordecai.
Sure. I wanna start by saying, um, congratulations and thank you to all the honorees tonight. Uh, in my tearjerker speech, I, I elected to make sure I also acknowledge all the other honorees, so congratulations to them. And, um, on the agenda tonight, we approved donations from the Hermetic Family Foundation for $10,000 for school lunch debt, and I wanna say thank you to them. Um, they had reached out to me several months ago, so I'm glad that, you know, that finally came through, and, um, unfortunately, there are families who, um, who cannot afford lunch, to put it frankly, so it's, it's wonderful that this organization was able to step up and, and help us. And also, uh, thank you to the West Orange African Heritage Organization for their donation of $5,000 towards trips to the African, African-American Heritage Museum in DC, so that, we'll put that to good use in our furtherance of the Amistad curriculum. And thank you to the Brain Injury Alliance of New Jersey for their donation as well. And adding on to the Amistad curriculum piece, as a resident, I'll be happy to, to, to visit, to hear about that report as well. I've been pushing for, for us to fully implement that for several years now, and a few weeks ago, I was able to connect the district with Almani Vani, who I spoke about a couple of, uh, board, board meetings ago, and he is the African history teacher at Piscataway High School, and he's going to meet with the social studies supervisor here and see how he can help, as well as Dr. Calfani, who is the director of African Studies at Essex County College, so hopefully that comes through. Um, I wanna say that my colleagues and I enjoyed going to the West Orange CPAC holiday party this past Saturday, as well as the West Orange Hispanic Foundation holiday party. Both were well-attended, Santa Claus made his appearance by fire truck, so that was really, that was a lot of fun, the kids had a great time, and, um, all is well, busy Saturday. And I wanna add my, my holiday greetings as well, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa to everyone, and Happy New Year. Thank you for your support for my many years on the board, and thank you for allowing me to serve you.
Thank you.
And thank you to my colleagues, you know, we, we, we say, we always say that, um, you know, sometimes board members don't get along, but we always make sure we find common ground and make sure that we respect each other, and, and, because this is important work, and the main common, commonality among all of us is, we're all passionate about education and students and our community. So I look forward to what the next board will be doing, and, uh, congratulations to you, Florastine, and also to Ms. Tonic Cliff.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson.
Um, ditto on everything Ms. Mordecai just said, uh, and, uh, wow, uh, it's gonna take me a while to process all this, but I, I do appreciate the time I've had to work with this board, and it, it's been interesting though because, uh, I mentioned to somebody the other day that in six years, on a five-person board, I've worked with eight other people. So that's a lot of, lot of change, and you see a lot of different styles, and while everyone is interested in, in education and the kids, you get so many different perspectives and look through so many different lenses as to where that focus lies. Like, uh, Ms. Mordecai and Ms. Lab originally came onto the board, they were already, uh, you know, essentially major advocates, uh, for special needs kids, and so everyone comes on with slightly different perspectives and, and, uh, to address different needs, and when you put all that together, there is the opportunity, uh, to do really great things. So I look forward to, uh, our new board members and, uh, bringing, bringing what they have. Merry Christmas, uh, Happy Kwanzaa, and, uh, Cog Simea.
Okay, Ms. Merklinger.
Um, so I just wanna thank Sandra and Mark for your time and service on the Board of Ed, and, um, I know I'll, I'll definitely be reaching out to you for your historical background on a lot of things, I'm sure, um, you're both of knowledge, and, and just being so involved is something to aspire to, so I appreciate everything that you guys have done and getting to know you more, um, being on the board. Um, you do spend a lot of time together, so you get to know each other pretty well, um, and that's been a great, uh, opportunity for myself. Um, so thank you guys for, for everything that you've done and continue to do, and I'm sure you'll still be involved in the community somehow, shape, or form, so I look forward to seeing what you have of next. Um, and I just wanna, uh, you know, tell everyone or thank everyone, um, and say, have a great, uh, holiday break, um, make sure you spend time with your families, your friends, teachers, staff, custodians, everyone in the district should just take the time and, um, you know, reflect, um, think about what's important, and spend the time with the folks that you love, and, uh, take a break from all the hustle and bustle of the holidays, and, uh, we'll see you guys back in January.
Well said. Um, from my part, uh, first, I do just wanna briefly correct something, uh, from last week, um, you know, there've been some questions about the executive drive development, and just for the official record, uh, Dr. Kascun and I met with some township representatives last week to update our existing knowledge of the project and, uh, ask some updated questions based on the community feedback we've been getting. And, uh, you know, it's four years out is the first thing, it's, it's, we were told by the chief financial officer of the township, John Gross, that it's about four years, uh, between approvals and construction and everything else, um, but that when you use the Rutgers Housing Study numbers, which are, which are really designed for figuring out how many kids you can expect from any given development in New Jersey, um, that it looks like it's probably going to be a total of 42 students possibly from the, um, affordable housing component of the, of the, uh, development, and maybe another 10 to 12 from the market rate unit. And, you know, 50 kids is something that, you know, granted, it's four years out, but that the district should be able to absorb, it's not anything near what I think was being bandied about before. You know, it's important when we look at these things to, you know, to look at the specific development and the rents that are going to be, that they're saying they're gonna be charging, and the number of bedrooms in the apartments and everything else, you know, if you use the, uh, there was a number last week that it was gonna be .49 students per unit, uh, because that's based on some national census figure, you know, if you use that at the Edison Lofts, which is similar in a lot of ways, where there is currently a little over 200 units rented, I'm told it was 208 at the moment, you know, if that, if you use that formula, you'd get 104 students, uh, what you actually have from Edison Lofts right now is four, not 104. So, you know, it's, you've gotta look at the specific projects as all. So, I think that, uh, you know, it's, it's not a major panic situation for the district by any stretch, so I just wanted to get that out there. Beyond that, um, Sandra's pointing out that we removed the trailers even, you know, in the past couple of years, so, you know, we were actually, our enrollment is down significantly from where it once was. So of course, you know, with something four years in the future, you know, you can't see the future, you don't know what's going to happen, but as presented to us, there's nothing for the board to be in a, oh my gosh, we're gonna put 200 kids, there's not gonna be 200 kids.
Uh, just one point though, and I'm glad you all had that meeting and, and came up with that. Uh, I live in English Town just below that, um, the thing to look at though, and I'm, I think you are pursuing this, is that you still need to do a demographic study...
Yes, absolutely.
That has a census-oriented approach, because you're not just looking at this development, you're looking at 500 units here, you're looking at, you know, whenever the, the hundred, uh, two, uh, 275 townhouses are built over there, and when the 200 units or 100, 200 units are built in the valley, you have to look at the total. If it were just this, we could, uh, we could place him in Kelly, based on current numbers.
Absolutely, and I think we're all in, you know, I can't speak for the two who aren't on the board yet, but I think we're all in agreement that we need to go out for RFP for a new demographer study, uh, early in the year, because, absolutely, and, you know, apply the right numbers to everything that's coming down the pike, and, because you're not just looking at, you know, I'm reassuring us about something that we're being told about this year that's planned for four years, we need to, we need a five, we need 10, we, you know, at some point, we'll, we'll need additional, yeah.
Cause just, when you look at, just the valley for instance, 100 apartments with 45% being, uh, affordable housing, uh, Hazel couldn't tolerate that tomorrow.
Right. Exactly.
But thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. So, you know, beyond that, I wanna thank you both for your service, you know, uh, Ms. Mordecai I found was a fantastic resource, as I came on as a new board member, uh, you know, between your experience and the fact that you literally know everyone, so that when we're at a training or at school boards workshop or whatever, you know, the introductions are amazing, and, you know, I found that as I was getting up to speed as being president, that you were extremely helpful. And, uh, Mr. Robertson, we have not always agreed on everything, but I, really, not always, but I've always appreciated that your heart is in the right place, that you're coming from it from the right perspective for doing what's right for kids, and if we don't always agree on how to get there, I think we all agree on the outcomes, and I think that's important. And I look forward to your continued advocacy from the audience in three-minute increments.
What about my letters and emails?
Oh, those are fine too.
And posts on Facebook.
The letters and emails are fine.
The videos can be longer, yeah.
In three-minute increments.
Uh, no, the videos can be longer.
He's all yours.
Petitions, there's all sorts of...
And with that, um, our next meeting is our annual reorganization meeting, that'll be at 8:00 PM in the library on January 6th. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, we'll see you then, we are adjourned.
Thank you.